Good evening, everyone. We'll call this meeting back to order at 6:37 PM. Tuesday, August 16th, Board of Education, Penfield Central School District. Board members, may I have a motion and a second? Oh, pledge. Goodness. I'm sorry. I was gonna jump right in.
Well, you can in a minute.
We're gonna stand for the pledge led by the lovely Sharon Irkfits for the last time.
Flight allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sharon. Board members, may I have a motion and a second, please, that we approve tonight's agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries, none opposed. Thank you. May I have a motion, please, in a second, that we approve the consent agenda as listed in your packet, including minutes, recommendations for CSE and pre-CSE, as well as some bitters and our therapy dog at Idi and Landing?
So moved.
What?
Nothing.
That was right. That's fine. You first. I got it.
Can I second that?
Can I have a second?
Sure, I'll second that.
We're all over the place tonight. All those in favor? All right, all in favor, none opposed. Thank you. We have a treasurer's report tonight. May I have a motion, please, and a second that the treasurer's report dated June 30th, 2022 be approved?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed. Thank you. And we have a special report tonight.
We do.
We do.
Yeah, so I'll ask the incredible Angela Dunson, our Director of Food Service, to join us up here. And you have a clicker that should work. And this is our food service update.
All right.
Hi, I'm Angela.
Thanks for having me. So I'm gonna do a little update on food service. So some 21-22 successes. As most of you are aware, we had free meals for all students this past school year. Those waivers really increased our average daily participation. So across the district, for the school year, we did 426,522 lunches were served and 146,924 breakfasts were served. So that's huge. So congrats to our staff that got all those kids fed. Our reimbursement rates were also increased last school year under the waivers. And we also received some supply chain grant money towards the end of the school year. I'll talk about it a little bit later, but we're also getting a second round of those supply chain grant money this coming school year. Staffing, so again, they did great being here and feeding all the kids. We were able to give them an increase ahead of the minimum wage. So they were very happy with that and well-deserved. We had a state ad review. So this is the one that comes every three years. They were due in March of 2020, right before everything closed down. So they were not in person, but we had a great audit. The few things that they needed from us were easily accessible and we were able to give those pretty quickly. So that's done and closed. So good for that. We did some fun activities this school year. So we celebrated National Nutrition Month, which was in March. We introduced some hummus to some of the kids at Bay Trail specifically. We also highlighted National Breakfast Week, which included some banana split parfaits. We did scones. We did some different things at each school. We also did April Fool's Day, so highlighted, had some fun with the kids. We had some Jell-O juice at one of the schools. We had donut bagels at the middle school. We had some alien serving. We closed some kitchens, so the kids were like, "What? What's going on?" So that was fun. And then we also highlighted School Lunch Hero Day in May, which, you know, congrats to all of our school service staff. They really deserve it. So a lot of the schools' principals coordinated with kids and they gave compliments and posters and whatnot, so that was really good. We also attended some student council meetings across the district to gain some feedback from the kids, answer questions, and most importantly, educate. A lot of the kids and staff don't really know what happens behind the scenes in food service. They think we just show up and serve them, but there's a lot that goes into it. So we just started that education piece. And I think that a lot of the kids were intrigued and they had really good questions and it was really good. So we're gonna continue doing that moving forward. Some of our challenges, we had obviously supply chain challenges. That was nationwide. Price increases, securing product. We brought on a couple secondary vendors just to help secure even substitution products. You know, it obviously was a trickle effect if the manufacturer didn't have it, the vendor didn't have it, they didn't have staffing to get it to us. So we really struggled with that, but we just ordered as much as we could when we could and stockpiled as much as we could, so we had substitute products. Also with that was equipment. So there were several repairs this school year. A lot of that was either from equipment not being used for two years and then also maybe holding off on the wayside of fixing equipment because the average daily participation was down. And then this year it was like sky high, so we had to make sure that we had working equipment. Again, staffing, we were short-staffed, but we made it work. We moved staff around. Luckily, all the staff were very willing to move around in schools. Yeah, I think that's it for that. So 22-23 updates. Again, with staffing, we're still struggling a little bit. We are in the process of, well, we have a school lunch supervisor position being posted. We're in the process of hiring two cook managers, setting up interviews for that. And then we also have several food service worker positions that we've interviewed and are in the process of checking references and whatnot. So we're really hoping to get some of these positions filled. The challenge this year is that with the students being back to free and reduced, we have to make sure we have a cashier, especially at the elementary level. Last year, we were able to use their pre-order forms to chuck off the kids versus somebody being at the cash register. But this year, we'll definitely need to make sure somebody's at the cash register. Free, reduced, paid applications, so meals are not free for all. All families will need to fill out an application if they think they qualify. We have put in place, in Infinite Campus, an electronic version, so families will easily be able to go into their parent portal and be able to fill out the meal benefit application. You don't have to worry about printing it or mailing it. So that will be something that's good this year, I think. We do anticipate potentially some more charges this year just because the last two years, meals have been free, families are still struggling. So I imagine that charges will be up a little bit this year. Again, with supply chain, additional funds are being given. We haven't gotten those exact amounts yet. The vendors so far that we have coming in have voiced that they feel like they're in a better spot this year with having delivery drivers and securing product. However, we are still getting cancellations even of USDA products through the government commodities. So we're still gonna struggle a little bit, but I think people are ahead of the game, so we're getting more notice, so we're able to switch things around. Catering, so we're looking to build that back up this year. I think it was on the wayside for a couple years. We have same items, but we've updated our catering brochure and online catering form for internal catering, so be on the lookout for that internally. USDA commodities, again, we're utilizing all our government commodities. There's additional supply chain pounds through USDA. Currently, fresh fruits and vegetables, there's extra pounds that are available through September 30th. So a lot of schools have been utilizing it for summer meals. We'll be able to utilize it in September, so we'll try to take advantage of that before dipping into our dollars towards that. We're also doing diversion this year, so we'll hopefully be able to secure things like, you know, we did beef, cheese, and chicken, so we're trying to secure like stuffed crust pizza, which is a kid's favorite, cheeseburger, or hamburgers, I should say. Those were really hard to get last year. And Tyson is still struggling this year for them, but May Wright seems to have them, so fingers crossed. UPK programming is starting this year, so I'm really excited to be part of that. As it gets off the ground and running, we'll be providing meals for those programs. Professional development standards for our food service staff still remains the same. We're working to get all our cook managers and cooks through Serve Safe. That counts as eight hours and that's a DOH regulation, so we'll be making sure everybody gets through that. We have updated our point-of-sale software system. So we transitioned from Horizon Solana to, which utilizes My Payments Plus, and we've moved over to Heartland Mosaic, which utilizes My School Bucks. We're also utilizing Heartland Mosaic for the back of the house food service, which was recipes and ingredients and production records and all of that. So we're kind of using one system, front of the house, back of the house. And My School Bucks also has a storefront, so the district is able to utilize that storefront for other things across the district. Nutrition standards, nothing real crazy here, but a couple things that they're still holding us to this current school year, 22-23, is that 80% of our weekly grains need to be whole grain rich, so that's up from 50%. And then the sodium targets are still in line to be transitioned this school year, which I don't have a fear about either of those because a lot of the manufacturers have those products already ready and go, which is just us ordering them and having them. Monroe County proposed meal prices. I know later in agenda this is on. We're looking to raise our breakfast and lunch prices by 10 cents, so that's the max that we could raise them. If you look at this chart, we're looking for $1.70 for breakfast, $3.00 for lunch, and 60 cents for milk. We're pretty much around the same as some of the other schools in Monroe County. And our percentage of free and reduced is at 17%. This may be low, but it could have been from a couple years of families not filling out the free and reduced application, so we might see an increase in participation there. And again, with reimbursement rates, they are lower than what they were last school year, but they're above what they previously proposed. So these are a little bit increased from the prior to COVID reimbursement rates. And that's all I have for you. I have a question.
Thank you so much. Yeah. Board members, questions? Comments?
I have a question. So with the transition to My School Bucks, are my families gonna be notified?
They will, yes.
Okay.
Yep, so there is some information on the website currently. And then after the board meeting tonight, there'll be more communication going out. And if families had balances in My Payments Plus, it automatically rolls over. They just have to create an account in My School Bucks. They'll be able to see their funds and all of that in My School Bucks once they create an account.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned the whole grains and sodium. Are there any other nutritional standards?
So there are standards. I actually brought it just so I could refer to it. So nothing is changing specifically. So we have to make sure that we are hitting minimum and maximum calorie levels for K through 8 and then 9 through 12. And then there are sodium levels and the whole grain levels. And then we also have to make sure that we're following the fruits and vegetable subgroups. So each day, if you look at our menu, I only highlight one vegetable each day, and that's to make sure that we're meeting our requirement. So we have to have like an orange-red vegetable, we have to have a leafy-green, we have to have a start-to vegetable and other vegetable. So those things all have to be as part of the state nutritional standards.
I have a question. On that same line, what about the sugar standards? Is there any kind of requirement regarding that?
So there isn't a ton of information on that that I have specifically, but I can look. I mean, there are sodium levels.
Yeah, I noticed that with the sodium.
But not sugar specifically. But we, for our snacks and all of that, we have to be in the smart snacks. So again, those have to meet certain requirements to be sold as à la carte products, so we can't just sell, you know, regular Doritos. We have to serve reduced-fat Doritos or things like that.
Okay.
So there are smart snack-approved snacks. And the vending machines here at the high school also have smart snack. The ice cream, the snack, all those things are within the standards.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Can I ask a question?
Sure. Don't ask my question, but go ahead.
I'll ask the question that I'll get from every student.
Okay.
Every time there's a update on standards. Will there still be chocolate milk?
There is still chocolate milk, yeah.
That's, while we have lots of adult questions, I can guarantee you that is a student question that gets asked.
Yes.
I have a special question.
Currently, fat-free chocolate milk is still available.
Long as it's chocolate. Thank you.
I'll ask my student question first.
Go for it.
Harvest of the month, do you think that will come back?
So I've heard lots about a harvest of the month. And although I don't anticipate it, it'll be harvest of the month this school year. I do anticipate having try-it days and some different opportunities for kids to try some different stuff, as well as keeping on trend with like plant-based options, because that's a big trend. If you look at our menu, without advertising, I tried to do a lot of Monday's meatless, just to kind of start moving to some of those trends that families are looking for. So although it might not be harvest of the month, we'll get there.
I can tell you that you mentioned the hummus, which I was around one of those days and kids were trying hummus. So like just that piece of, and I really, Angela, I think you've done a great job sort of bringing new energy and thinking outside the box. I would just tell you that, you know, we talk a lot here in our schools around, you know, sort of building positive relationships with students and teachers and making sure that school is a safe place for all kids. The things your cafeterias did this year, especially around, the one I know very well is around April Fool's Day, is really had kids coming home talking about the cafeteria and how hilarious they were and how funny it was. And like that's, you know, it's hard to like put that into like some sort of number or data, but the fact that students from K all the way in high school as well were, found it fun, saw that, you know, their folks work in the cafeteria, had a heart, had humor, were real people. Those are the pieces we're doing. It's not just in the classroom, but it's all of us working together to have some fun and do some good stuff too. So, thank you.
On behalf of the board, really, a big shout-out to you guys because we know you've been short-staffed. I know across the district, a lot of departments have been short-staffed and we really appreciate all the work that you've done and that your staff has done. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes special reports.
Ooh, that was fast. Oh, wait, but now you have superintendent.
Yeah, I do, yeah. Just once.
All right, you just want to say that. All right.
You ready?
I'm ready. Superintendent reports, here we go.
Great. So superintendent reports, I just have a couple really student honors and then a couple of updates from me. And then I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Potter to talk about code of conduct and social emotional learning update. And then we'll stop back at Dr. Driffl for business updates. So congratulations, spring, I know it's summer, but it takes time to bring all this information in from Section 5. And congratulations to Nate Hart for tennis and Lisa Farclis for girls across being named to the All-Greater Rochester Team for the spring season. And then we had, a number of students were named for honorable mention. I won't read all of them, they're in the agenda, name and sport. So congratulations to those students, making Penfield very proud. Bus safety program. The Penfield Central School District Transportation Department held another successful Penfield Strives for School Bus Safety Program for kindergarten students and their parents during the first week of August. Students and parents took a bus ride and participated in several safety stations during the annual event. Photo from that day. Thankfully, it's been good the last few years we've been able to do this in the sense of good weather. But it really is a lot of fun to see those kindergartners, soon-to-be kindergartners, many of them riding that school bus for the very first time. And then fun too for parents who are riding for the first time. You know the parents who've had a few kids prior to that and their kindergarten are still riding the bus, but they're kind of overriding the bus, you know? But it's still a lot of fun, a great event. Real quick, new school year, so believe it or not, August 31st is our first day for our faculty. They'll be here for three days before our students arrive on Wednesday, September 7th. That's the Wednesday after Labor Day. And our next board meeting will be that Tuesday prior to the first day of school. COVID updates, so as you may have seen on the news, just wanted to talk through here is that the CDC released their most up-to-date guidance for particularly schools on August 11th, so just a little. They removed recommendations for cohorting students, the required distancing, quarantine exposed, so students or staff who may have been around somebody who has tested positive do not need to quarantine. They did get rid of the recommendation to do tests to stay in school and also removed the recommendation for conducting random screening tests at school. So I meet with Dr. Mendoza regularly, met with him today. And how he put it, which I think is fair, is we're really starting to look at, like, think 2019. So our nurses are not gonna be giving COVID tests in school. Our staff do not need to be tested in school. We're getting back to sort of the pre-COVID rules and protocols. However, masking for students and staff remains optional. Penfield was really successful with this last year. You know, there was some worry, some concern about was there gonna be any sort of back-and-forth about a student or staff that wanted to wear a mask or didn't. We really had very few issues and, you know, Penfield, again, being pride, priding ourselves on sort of that respectful discourse is that we hope that students and staff who want to wear a mask may do so. That's still an option and will continue to be an option. They do ask with COVID that if individuals who experience symptoms like cough, fever, sore throat, vomiting, diarrhea, they should stay home. If they go to the nurse with those severe symptoms, they will be sent home. Again, think 2019. If a kid comes in vomiting, they're going home, we're not sending them back to class. CDC recommends that at home, a at-home COVID test is given, but it won't be administered at school. It would be an option for families to do that. And then obviously, we've got little kids. We're gonna continue to do what we've always done, which is talk about hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette. Respiratory etiquette in my house means a vampire cough. So if you need to cough or sneeze, do it into your elbow like a vampire would. But we'll continue to have those education points with our youngest kids. Reminders, you know, for all of our students, but it's really our K-1, 2 that needs some of those reminders that they're in school for the first time. Just as a sort of reminder, and I know we've talked about COVID for way too long and many years, but the CDC, all they can ever do is give us recommendations. There's no requirements that the CD puts out, the CDC. So we are anticipating very similar updates from New York State Education Department and the New York State Department of Health. We do not anticipate any mandate for masking or mandate for vaccinations. We are looking to get back to, again, sort of the 2019. So New York State is providing districts at-home tests. They should be delivered sometime at the end of August through BOCs. We'll pick those up. Once we receive them, we will do another send-home like we did last year many times, so anticipate that sometime that first week or two of school. Hopefully, the first week of school, if we can get them, get them distributed. We don't anticipate that happening all year like it did last year. So there are a lot of ways through insurance, through pharmacies, that you can get a free COVID test. We do believe we'll still have some in our school. So if a student or a parent would like one or a staff member, we'd be able to give them. But we don't anticipate getting the thousands of tests from the state and then turning them around and sending them home on a regular basis like we did last year. And that's where we are with COVID at this moment. Questions?
Board members, questions?
Tom, just clarification. You said that the nurse would not be testing, right?
Correct.
Okay, so if a child comes to school and it's suspected COVID, it would just be a call home and the parents would come and get the child or?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And so really, when we look at, when we talk about sort of if we're thinking COVID, this is, the really nice piece about trying to get back to pre-COVID rules is it really puts some onus back on our school nurses. They're professionals, they're RNs, they've got incredible experience and really taking a look at determining, like, you know, they know that Tom has allergies and between September and December has a runny nose and a cough because it's allergies. And in the midst of COVID, there wasn't a whole lot of, that that nurse could do to say, "I know Tom, he's got allergies, he's okay."
Right.
And so that was really the frustration we all felt. So this is, again, when you look at, this language is from CDC, that second bullet of their list of things where students and staff should stay home. And I kind of look at them as like the 2019. Like, those are all pretty big things. If you have a fever, you shouldn't be in school. The cough is one we talked about with Dr. Mendoza today. It's really like that, you know, tickle in your throat cough versus the constant cough. So these are bigger things that we would typically send a student home for anyway.
Yeah.
But to be really clear, the nurse is not gonna say, because we're not doing tests to stay, so the nurse isn't gonna say, you know, "You've got a really bad sore throat and fever, take a COVID test and then go back to class."
Yeah.
Because those are symptoms that if it's not COVID, it could be many other things that are contagious and you shouldn't be in school.
Right, which is why I wanted to get that clarification.
Absolutely. So the one that's not on here is while quarantine, that's the language we always got confused with in talking through, is quarantine, is staying home because you were around somebody with COVID-positive. CDC has removed that as a recommendation. The state, we believe, will also remove that. The isolation is if you test positive for COVID, it's still a five-day isolation. Stay home for five days, come back to school or work, and you can wear a mask for the remaining five days. So that is still in play. We believe New York State will follow that. But it's gonna fall a lot on because we won't be doing our rapid PCR tests. We're not gonna be doing testing in the nurse's office. So it will rely back like it did in 2019, if you think of the flu. If we send a student home and we believe, the nurse believes it's flu, we would request that the parent take the student to the doctor to get a flu test. It becomes sort of that partnership again. You know, we're not gonna follow that student to verify that they took a flu test, but we're hoping that in that partnership, a parent or guardian is gonna go and if it's a flu test, then stay home until the fever's reduced. In this case, we hope that folks would wear a mask if it was COVID-positive.
Okay.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Is the district still providing masks for families that would like them?
Dan?
At least at the beginning of the year, for sure.
Okay.
We have plenty available.
Thank you.
So yeah, a lot of those were received from the state. So as long as we have them, absolutely. And then we'll monitor and go from there.
Board members, other questions?
I have a question. So opt-out, right? If I opted out of getting the test last year?
Yes.
Can I still not, like, how would, how are you gonna manage that?
It's a great question. So once we get them, that's the opt-out of getting the test sent home. So we will most likely do what we did this last time, but we'll start fresh, which is put an email out asking people who want to opt-out again. So you probably have to opt-out one more time. We're anticipating we'll have enough tests for all staff and students, but it's coming from the state and they're delivering them to the 700-plus school districts in New York. So if we don't have enough, then we'll also look at doing, you know, drive-in or stop-in options to get those tests out. But if we're gonna send them home with all students again, we'll look at doing the opt-out email again to make sure we don't send home if parents don't need them.
Thank you.
Yep. And that one reason I know the state's doing it is because a lot of the tests that we had by the end of the year have become expired. And so, you know, and there's research or data on both sides on whether the expired test works as well as if it wasn't expired. And so, who knows? But if you have an expired test and you still need to take it, you know, that's up to you. But for us as a school, we're not gonna, we're not, we'd wanna just send them home if we can. Great questions.
Other questions? Okay.
Okay, let's all just take a moment and say hopefully that will be the last of my COVID updates.
Wouldn't that be nice?
We do know that, you know, if things ebb and flow and we'll monitor and share updates if they come and when they come from the state. All right. So I shift from COVID to something sadder, but also exciting. And just a moment if we could, a happy retirement to Sharon Irkfits. The board and my team here all know who Sharon is. And for our community, Sharon Irkfits is our district clerk and board clerk. And just a heartfelt congratulations and sincere thank you on behalf of the district. I will let Lisa say the same, I'm sure, for the board. This is your last board meeting officially. And we just, I can never say thank you enough and know that like, well, it's not your last day, like, "I'll see you tomorrow," but like the last board meeting. So Sharon, thank you very, very much for all that you've done.
I'm not crying today, but I just want to say on behalf of the board, if anyone else would like to say something, please do, but we love you, Sharon, really, from the bottom of all our hearts. See, now I'm gonna cry.
See, I know, I know.
But we just really appreciate everything you do for the board, for the district, for the community, your compassion for students and staff members. And every time I forget my password, you never make me feel bad. And so I really appreciate you and all the work, your knowledge. And when I mess up and you say I missed something, and you just do a lovely job of keeping us all in line. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. I just want to thank everyone and I really appreciate my time at the district. I enjoyed it all. Looking forward to spending time with my family, but somehow I got the same age as old people. But it's been a really wonderful time and I'm grateful. Thank you all.
We're grateful back.
Thank you, Sharon.
I think we should have a moment.
I think we should have a moment of silence.
I, and so again, thank you. And, and I will just tell you, because I told her I wouldn't say anything, but like her other job title, so everybody knows, is Franca? Franca?
Fraca.
Fraca, which is what our grandchildren call her. And I hope that you do truly find the time to do all the nothing you want, not having to be up as early, although you will be, I'm sure, with the little ones.
My little rewind button, as I finally call them, because going back to my favorite position of being a mom slash grandma.
That's awesome.
No pay, but the rewards are amazing.
Thank you, Sharon. We'll shift to, I'll turn over to Mrs. Tasha Potter for code of conduct and an SCL update.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam.
You're welcome.
And good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board of Education. Tonight I plan to talk about the process that we're going to engage in to review and revise our district code of conduct. But first, I want to anchor us into why we have a code of conduct. So a code of conduct helps students succeed by establishing expectations. It provides a cohesive approach to our practices across the district and helps school staff and administrators address behavior equitably and consistently. A code of conduct ensures students' rights to an education in a safe, caring, and supporting learning environment. A code of conduct provides the tools for students, families, faculty, and staff to understand the agreements that we establish for behavior within our school, community, and school culture. So the code of conduct is an opportunity to convey our commitment to restorative practices and to social emotional learning. Restorative communities are safe spaces physically, intellectually, socially, and emotionally, composed of respectful and responsible adults and students. Restorative communities promote a positive and healthy school culture by building, strengthening, and when harm occurs, repairing relationships through social emotional learning and restorative dialogue. So during the 2021-22 school year, we introduced restorative practices in a holistic way to our district community, providing an opportunity for our Penn Field High School students. We had families, teachers, and administrators participate in a three-day training. We plan to continue that same structure during the 22-23 school year. So this slide represents the process of making sure our code of conduct ensures a social emotional lens, allows us to know our students and develop cultural competency, supports effective student-centered instruction, and it allows us as a district to move from the paradigm of punishment to that of development. And so as part of this process, we plan to engage the following stakeholders. We have already shared communications. Each of our schools has recommended family members to participate. We have also had Bay Trail and Penn Field High School recommend student participants. We will also make sure that we have teachers and faculty, district and building administrators, transportation, food service, Board of Education members, our communications director, and community partners participating. This visual kind of gives you an outline of the timeline that we will engage in. So we organized a team. As a result, our first meeting will take place next week on August 25th with the team just basically giving us an opportunity to talk about the process and really have some foundational understanding of what we will engage in during the course of the school year. We plan to review our district data. Then we want to make sure that we are reviewing our current district code of conduct. But then we want to invite into the process local and national codes of conduct to also review. It's during this time of reviewing our district code that we take a look to notice what are some of the things in our current code that we want to make sure that we're keeping? And which parts do we know that we want to revise and align with restorative practices and social emotional learning and some of the current research around what our school cultures should look and feel and sound like for our students and faculty and staff? And we want to then spend some time engaging in a development process. Where you see here accordion feedback model, this is a time for us to take the information that comes out of the development, have each one of our stakeholder representatives provide information and we push it back out to those groups as well out to, as well as out to our community. We'll start to spend a little time drafting the code. We'll have some stakeholder sessions and a community town hall. And then we'll have more of that in and out feedback. And then finally, we would end with a recommendation to our superintendent's cabinet and to the Board of Education. This really just gives you a holistic view of our stakeholders, all of the meeting dates that we've planned for this year, as well as that previous visual of the development timeline. So as part of this process, we will be partnering with the Children's Institute. That partnership began in July and it will take us through into June 2023. We will have monthly meetings where we will be planning for our stakeholder Code of Conduct Committee meetings. We're also going to spend time planning for our community conversation as well as how to solicit input and feedback from our stakeholders to ensure that multiple perspectives and voices are represented in this process. One of the things I'd like to note is that our student participants in selecting our students and having representatives for both Bay Trail and PHS, it's important to note that their voice is very integral to this process because the code of conduct really does shape how they experience school. So we want our students and our families and our faculty and staff to really be, you know, entrenched in this process. One of the things that we also wanted to make clear is that when we have a final product, we want to make sure that it's accessible to families and to students. And so it should be written in family, student-friendly language, language that's easy to understand. We know that codes of conduct, because of the detail that goes into it, can be a lengthy document. So we want to make sure again that there's something that's abridged so that our students and our faculty can see themselves in the accountability that they have within the code of conduct. We want to make sure that copies are provided at the beginning of the school year and in multiple languages for speakers of other languages. And we want to make sure that it is posted on our district website, but also available within our schools. So as I noted earlier, we will have a community conversation. It will be our code of conduct update with the Children's Institute. That is going to be planned for March 29th, 2023, here in the PHS auditorium from 6:00 to 7:30. And that's all I have for code of conduct. Are there any questions?
Board members, I'm processing. It's a lot. Thank you.
Questions? Yes, Catherine?
So, Tasha, we've had, as you know, a code of conduct and then a code of conduct for athletes. Is this going to be one document for all students in all capacities?
Yes, it should be one document. It should be inclusive of our athletics expectations as well as all of the expectations that we have for schools and majors.
Okay, thank you.
Board members, other questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment.
Sure.
I love, first of all, that we're including our students because I think it's so important that they're a part of that agent of change. But also just that continuum for them to be a part of from the beginning to the end and just the thought that goes, that is involved, that goes into that. So I think that's just a real-life experience for them. When they leave PHS, they like join the real job market. Like, that's just something that people have to do in the real world. And I think that's a great experience for those kids that are going to be a part of that to really see these from the beginning to the end.
I just have a comment really, because I'm thinking, I'll have more questions, I'm sure. But I, just a couple of things I wanted to note. One is that I'm excited for this process, two reasons. One is because we've had a relationship with the Children's Institute for a long time, right? So dating back to 2018?
Right. And so I think they're familiar with us. They're familiar where we were from a social emotion standpoint, from a restorative standpoint. And like, you know what I mean? And then they can kind of move us along in this direction that we're in. So I'm excited about that. I'm also excited because we in Policy Committee have been sitting with this for a long time. And we kind of started digging it into it before COVID. And then we were going to bring in like PTA stakeholders and principals. And then we kind of got stuck and this just, I like this so much better. It just seems much more inclusive of students and staff and just a wider lens instead of us trying to work on it. And, but we also, on the flip side, did do a lot of work. You had brought in some graduate students to look at some things. So I'm excited about this process. I'm still not clear how we're going to bring it. I know we will figure it out, but.
Well, I think that's a really good point because I'm sure that when we start to take a look at our current code of conduct, we're going to realize that there are parts of it that are just really good work. Like you have been having conversations. There have been revisions over, you know, the past several years. But this gives us an opportunity to look at it holistically and identify which parts of it do we want to make sure that we continue to have? And then which parts of it do we know we should be updating and revising? So I think that's really important that you bring that out because it's not throwing everything out, but more so really aligning ourselves with some of the best practices, having all of those voices be part of the process and utilizing our students and our families and our faculty and staff to help to really shape the document that's going to help us really be, you know, in each one of our schools and in our district as a whole. So.
That's great. Thank you.
Lisa, if I may?
You have another question?
Yep, I'll comment. In addition to having looked at this and how, what groups are we going to bring in? And how are we going to move forward with this? Through this whole process, we, you've directed it towards that restorative practice piece, which, I mean, that's how you create empathic, empathetic people. And that is sorely needed because there's just so much going on in school and everybody's very self-centered and there's nothing to blame about that. It's just kind of how it is. But when, when you have a whole system of what we expect from our students and it's from that point of view and that perspective, I think it's, I think it's long overdue. And through our inadvertent, you know, what would you call it, delay, we've come to that point. So there's, there's your silver lining. I did it for you.
Here's your COVID silver lining.
So I appreciate that.
Point because if we think about it, when we talk about shifting to development, it's an opportunity to build skills in our students so that they're able to have, you know, a place of understanding some of the behaviors that they may have demonstrated that cause harm. But then more importantly, how do I find myself not demonstrating those same behaviors again? And what can I take from this situation and what conversations can I have?
Right.
So that we can move forward. And I think it really just shapes the whole school community, the whole culture.
I do too. And then, you know, it is part of that, it's, I'm not a bad person because I made a mistake. I understand now what I did and, you know, this is how I can do it better. And then instead of feeling bad about yourself, you can feel like, I get it and you can feel more accomplished. So it's just a different perspective, a different direction towards the same goal. And I think it's very valuable.
Thank you.
All right.
Dr. Putnam?
Can I keep going?
You can keep going, yeah.
You get to keep going.
All right. So now I'm going to transition us to social emotional learning. Again, like I think it's important for us to have some common understanding and using the same language when we're defining social emotional learning. So SCL is a process through which all young people and adults acquire and apply the knowledge, skills, and attitudes to develop healthy identities, manage emotions, and achieve personal and collective goals. Feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain supportive relationships, and make responsible and caring decisions. SCL is integral to our education and human development. The New York State Education Department suggests that social emotional learning is essential for learning and essential for life. SCL advances educational equity and excellence through authentic school, family, community partnerships to establish learning environments and experiences that feature trusting and collaborative relationships. SCL can help to address various forms of inequity and allows young people and adults to co-create thriving schools and contribute to just communities. So just as we just referenced, Lisa, when you had mentioned the relationship with the Children's Institute in 2018, it was that same time, August 2018, that the New York State Education Department released the New York State Social Emotional Learning Benchmarks. So this slide, as part of the development process, the state's Safe School Task Force identified the following goals to guide social emotional learning benchmarks for all of our New York State schools. And of the benchmarks, the three that continue to kind of facilitate this work across the state is to develop self-awareness and self-management skills, essential to success in school and in life. Use social awareness and interpersonal skills to establish and maintain positive relationships and demonstrate ethical decision-making skills and responsible behaviors in personal, school, and community contexts. So when the state provided us with these initiatives, it really encouraged and supported the development of learning environments that are emotionally and physically healthy. At which point, the Penn Field Central School District began prioritizing social emotional learning. And that's when our relationship with the Children's Institute began. And so I'd really like to make a connection to all of the ways in which social emotional learning supports and fosters well-being for our students. When you think about social emotional learning and equity, it really offers culturally responsive practices in collaboration with SCL competencies. This has effectively improved student academic performance and life opportunities. SCL and school climate offers a safe and inclusive academic environment that recognizes and values the languages and cultures of all of our students. It provides caring connections, trust, and respect, and allows for our students to actively engage in curriculum and be challenged. SCL and mental health. So SCL can be one of the most proactive prevention initiatives for mental health illness. Research indicates that focusing on social emotional needs can help reduce students' anxiety, suicide, substance abuse, depression, and impulsive behavior. This concentration can also help to increase test scores, attendance, and pro-social behaviors such as kindness, personal awareness, and empathy. SCL and trauma. SCL can nurture skills that better equip young people to manage responses and improve outcomes when they have been negatively impacted by trauma and adverse childhood experiences such as neglect, abuse, and violence. So with our prioritization on social emotional learning, I want to talk through some of the partnerships that we are beginning and continuing. So we're pleased to announce that we are entering into a new partnership with the Center for Youth and continuing our partnership that we began in 2018 with the Children's Institute. And I'll tell you just that the Center for Youth, as a community organization, they believe in providing equitable and beloved communities in which all youth grow and thrive. The Center for Youth is currently serving 10 districts and 31 schools in the Rochester City School District. As a result of our partnership with the children, with, excuse me, with the Center for Youth, we will have access to six social learning specialists. The social learning specialists will be employed by the Center for Youth. They will serve as members of the school, building-based support services team. And the social learning specialists will work to create a youth, family, and faculty-friendly presence in each of our schools. This work will be facilitated by Paul Clark, and he is the Director of School-Based Programs at the Center for Youth. The Children's Institute believes that learning is a lifelong process that occurs socially and emotionally. So in continuing our partnership with the Children's Institute, our collaboration with them ensures a whole school, whole student- them ensures a whole school, whole student implementation of SEL. Our work and collaboration with them will help us to align Second Step to the research-based social emotional resources. They will support us with developing and vetting new resources. They will provide coaching and consultation services for our district and members of our school teams. They will co-facilitate monthly district Equity Champion Team meetings. They will co-facilitate our district SEL community conversation, which I will share more about later in this presentation. The work of the Children's Institute will be facilitated by Elizabeth Devaney. She is the Director, Whole Child Connection, and Maureen Mustafa George, Associate Director of Equity and School Services, Whole Child Connection. I just want to point out that both community organizations have beliefs that are aligned with the social emotional benchmarks outlined by the New York State Education Department. And so this kind of takes you back a little bit because on March twenty-second, we presented to the Board an Equity and Access Update, at which point we talked to you about our two K-12 social work district positions. We feel that the positions that are held by Melissa Green and Dabney McClary are positions that are essential to ensuring social emotional well-being for our students and providing support for families, faculty, and staff. So in addition to our K-12 social worker positions, I'd like to introduce the two new positions. One, the two new positions will also guide our social emotional learning work. And those positions are K-five SEL integration specialists. We have hired, hired and had both of those individuals working all summer long, and they are Laura Fitch and Anjali Moise. We're excited to have these roles because they will provide direct support to our teachers and staff. They're going to engage our faculty and staff in individual coaching, and they will model best practices for our teachers. And they will also be participating on our district-level team. And as just referenced, our six school-based social learning specialists will be specific to student support. And as our social learning specialists from the Center for Youth, they will be responsible for developing a restorative-based system and providing a safe environment for our students. They will supplement the existing school services and capitalize on academic learning for all of our students. They will provide immediate crisis response for our students when in need. They will coordinate requests for prevention education services. And when students demonstrate struggles with their peers and their adults, our social learning specialists from the Center for Youth will offer matched intervention for presenting social and emotional behaviors. So I think it's important to just notice that we are trying to develop supports at every level to have specific things that are happening at the district level just to create the implementation. We have direct supports connected to teachers, and we are also having direct supports connected to each of our students. And so as referenced earlier, we will be in collaboration with the Children's Institute, hosting a community conversation on October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, from six to seven-thirty in the Penfield High School auditorium. Again, we're excited to do this in collaboration with the Children's Institute. Questions?
Members' questions?
No comment. Yeah, so we've been, we've been looking at SEL for a long time, and we brought Children's Institute in in two thousand eighteen. And as a sort of a somber reminder, it was when Penfield dealt with a number of suicides in a short period of time. And back in two thousand eighteen, we held a community forum in the auditorium and shared what we knew and shared an open forum for, for parents and students and faculty to share their concerns. And what we heard over and over and over again was, our schools need more mental health support. Our schools need more social emotional learning. Our students need to know beyond the classroom that there's people there to support them. And, and from there started the partnership with the Children's Institute. It's a lot that a district had to deal with and, and brought in an expert in the field with the Children's Institute in their research-backed, evidence-based work. And that partnership was wonderful, really started to put a lot into place. At the time, we started seminars at the high school. We started having meetings with students in groups and small groups, making sure they knew who the mental health staff is in the building. One of the biggest concerns we had from families and students was our, our psychologists, our counselors, and our social workers are all school social workers, school psychologists, school counselors. So it's not a forty-five-minute, once a week, come into the office and, and, you know, sit on the couch and, and have a session because there's too many students and not enough staff. So, you know, COVID opened up some opportunities, both with funding and with a different look at title grants and how we can provide this much-needed support in a K-12 district format that, that can truly be there to help students. There's a great number of students in Penfield that can come in, go to school, go home, and not necessarily maybe need that access. But there are also a great number of students who need that support along the day, the stressful times, the difficult times. And this is really building that base for real support, again, utilizing unique funding revenues and utilizing our grants and title grants to ensure that we can build something that truly supports our kids. And, you know, it's, it's, I'm glad that the Children's Institute is partnering with us again, and the work that they bring to the table has been, has been wonderful. So the other piece, I think, that really, you know, Ms. Potter outlined is this piece that it's not one person that we hire that can solve things, but really it's that providing our teachers and our staff support. So those K-five SEL integrators are really there to work with our teachers to help build skills. The last thing I'll share with you, so interesting, is we have been doing a lot of hiring coming into this new school year. I meet with every new person before we make an offer to just talk through sort of what Penfield's about and what that individual's about. And when I've talked to every elementary teacher and I talk about, how do you, what do you, how do you do SEL in your, in your school? I won't tell you my real questions. I don't want those to get out. But I ask the questions, and they all talk about, you know, circle time, morning meeting, coming together. And these are like things that schools have done for years, but not necessarily called them SEL. And so when I said, actually, this year, we've got a schedule where it's put into the elementary day, every elementary teacher we hired said, that's amazing. Because they're already doing it. They're already working with students. They're already circling up. They're always having these conversations. So this work along with this is, and I sat in some PD this year with the Children's Institute and our SEL folks, really building toolboxes to support our teachers. For some teachers, it's natural, circle up, let's talk about a difficult situation that happened at recess or that happened, you know, this morning. And others, it's, it's new. It's, it's, it doesn't come natural. And so that toolbox really helps have these, have these really good conversations to support our kids. And so just, I think it's a great plan. I think I love how it's outlined. And then it really is just a reminder, if you've been in our community, you know that we've been focused on the whole student for a long time. And you also know that we've gone through some pretty dark times when it comes to students and staff mental health, and how do we be as proactive as we can? And the Children's Institute ties it all back to research that Tasha did a great job working through, that it's the academic pieces, the test scores, all those other things. So it's not SEL or rigor. It's an and. Every single day, it's an and. So I'm looking forward to that. And so that was my really long comment and a thank you.
Now I have a question.
See, I was waiting. I knew, I knew you had a question.
Always have a question. So the, the relationship with the Center for Youth, are we anticipating that, like a one-year relationship or ongoing? Because I'm super excited about having like a person in every building, but how do we?
I would say that I think that it's new. So anytime we do something new, we'll evaluate as we go through the year.
Okay.
It is, it is much less expensive to do it this way than to hire our own six staff members and, and I believe using the IDA grants.
Yes, the IDA grant is helping us to fund that.
Yeah. So I think we could see it really doing some amazing things and, and, but with everything in schools, we have an annual budget. We'll review and take a look. Again, all of this ties back to that data piece. You know, what, you know, what have we seen? How is it working? And a lot of that is right back to how kids are performing. The attendance is a huge piece. If you don't feel safe coming to school, you don't come to school. And so that's a, that's a piece we want to keep building, those attendance rates. We're still, like most schools, sort of struggled with them through COVID. And now we're getting out of that and back to some more traditional view of, of attendance. And so that's my long answer. I think I would love to see it happen, but I also want to be fair that we'll see how this year goes and, and look at the data.
Great. Thank you. Other questions? No? All right. Great.
Dan, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Dr. Putnam. Good evening, Board. Hope everybody's doing well, enjoying this beautiful August weather that we've been having. Couple updates from my office this evening. First of which is an intermunicipal agreement with Penfield Ambulance for utilization of our fuel depot. So we have similar arrangements with the Fire Department, Monroe and Bosse's, Monroe County Sheriff's Office, the same arrangement. We just had to be sure when they requested access to this that it wasn't an administrative burden to be able to facilitate on our end, and we don't anticipate it's going to be any problem. So we're happy to welcome the partnership, and that goes through this fiscal year, so June thirtieth, twenty-three. As Mrs. Dunson eloquently spoke to earlier, we have proposed meal pricing and an associated food service budget for the upcoming year. As she mentioned, the meal pricing is scheduled to increase by a dime each for each meal, breakfast and lunch, bringing those to one-seventy for breakfast and three dollars for lunch, sixty cents for an extra milk. And we'll go over the food service budget for next year and what our unaudited financial performance was for that budget just in a moment. We will review year-end general fund balance for the general fund for the end of the fiscal year, again, unaudited, and we will approve the twenty-two, twenty-three tax warrant and establish the tax rates for our six component towns. So the unaudited financial performance for the food service fund last year was absolute banner year. We haven't had a positive financial year like this in many years. So we took in a little bit over two-point-six million dollars in revenue based on those really high daily participation rates that we saw with, with the free lunches and meals last year versus expenditures of a little over two-point-one million dollars for an operating surplus just shy of half a million dollars. Couple that with the prior fund balance that we carried, the total fund balance in that fund is a healthy eight-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars. For the next year, our budget is one-point-nine-eight million dollars. It's a little bit less than what we experienced last year based on anticipated less food costs, less sales. And we're also utilizing a hundred thousand dollars in fund balance. So that fund balance number there, that eight-hundred-and-eighty thousand, we're really only supposed to carry about three months' worth of revenues for food service. So if you take the two-point-six and divide it by ten, times three, it's around seven-point-eight, seven-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. So we're about a hundred thousand dollars high relative to what the state says we should be at. So that's why we're going to draw down the fund balance a little bit in the budget for next year. So both of the, the amount of the budget and the meal prices will be on the docket later for board consideration and approval. Jumping over to the general fund balance, this again is unaudited, and there's really no changes relative to what the preview was back at our June seventh meeting. So we started the year with beginning fund balance of four-point-six million dollars. We had revenues for the year of a hundred-and-ten million dollars. We had carryover encumbrances from the prior year of one-point-four million dollars. We had transfers from the Capital Reserve, so from that two thousand fourteen and twenty-sixteen Capital Reserves with the community authorized project back in December, we took twenty million dollars. And then we also had a tax surcharge settlement around fifty thousand dollars last year. We then back out what the expenditures were for the year, that a hundred-and-twenty-six million. That does include the twenty million dollars that was associated with the, the transfer from the Capital Reserves that shows up as an expenditure. What the year-end encumbrances are, according to our estimates at year-end as of June thirtieth, an allocation to the TRS Reserve, an allocation to the EBLAR Reserve, which is the Employee Benefits and Accrude Liability Reserve, an allocation to the Liability Reserve, an allocation to the two thousand twenty-one Capital Reserve, the little bit of interest earnings that those reserves earned last year, with interest rates being as low as they were. And then the assigned fund balance that we had indicated throughout the budget development process that we would have for this current fiscal year, along with the four percent state authorized unassigned fund balance, which is where the most that we're allowed to carry by law, which gives us to no available fund balance. And again, does not require any kind of additional authorization from the Board as we go through the audit process. We had our auditors in for three days last week. We haven't seen a draft report yet, but typically that'll come sometime in the middle of September. Audit committee typically reviews it at the end of September or early October, and then we come back to the full Board with an audit presentation from, from those folks. So I should note that the year incurred a deficit. So we had a hundred-and-ten million dollars in revenues and a hundred-and-twenty-six million dollars in expenses, but it was due to that twenty million dollar transfer from the Capital Reserve. So without that planned expense, we would have actually had a little bit of, you know, about a four million dollar surplus. So the other item of business at our August meeting every year is to adopt the tax warrant and set the tax rates. So the levy is exactly what we were projecting it to be all throughout the, the spring, is a two-point-one percent levy increase year over year. The collection period will begin, as it always does, on September first and go to October thirty-first. Typically, the first thirty days, there's no associated penalty. If the tax payment is made in October, there's usually a two percent fee. In Monroe County, there's also installment plans where you can pay on September fifteenth, October fifteenth, and November fifteenth with an associated fee there. What the table shows is what the prior year tax rates were, what the actual final rates are for this upcoming tax collection season on a per a thousand dollars of assessed value, what the dollar increase or decrease was on that annual basis, what the percentage difference was. And then back in October, back in April, what we had forecasted it to be, and then what the forecast was to actual. So for Penfield, for instance, the prior year was twenty-seven dollars and ten cents of the tax rate on a thousand dollars of assessed value. This upcoming year, it'll be twenty dollars and ninety-four cents based on the town's revaluation process. So as those assessments come up, tax rates come down. So the tax rate drops twenty-two percent. We forecasted it would actually drop twenty-three-point-two-seven percent. But as you can see in the, the far right column, all of our forecasts were a little bit low, about half a percent, based on the initial assessments in Penfield going down relative to where they were in April. So through the, the grievance process and the Board of Assessment reviews, some of those assessments came down a little bit, so the rate came up a little bit. Like Penfield, Massaden had a revaluation process this year, so they saw their tax rate come way down. If we look at the true value tax rate across all the six towns, if each town were at that hundred percent equalization rate, which is the assessments theoretically match the market values in the eye of New York State, the tax rate this year would be twenty dollars and ninety-four cents, very similar to where, where Penfield is. So that would be a nine percent reduction, and we were estimating it back in April to be a nine-point-seven percent reduction. So pretty close to what our estimates were, all the equalization rates came out to be the same as what we thought they were going to be in April when they were finalized in July, just a little bit difference on the rate due to the, the fluctuation in assessments in Penfield town. And with that, I'll open it up to any discussion.
Members' questions for Dan?
No questions? I have a question, Dan. But now I forgot what it was. Oh, let me find it. Let me find it. So when we did the transfer for the fourteen and fifteen Capital Reserves, would that, that close those two reserves out then? We're done?
Yeah, they're fully liquidated. Yep. So the only two Capital Reserves we have now are the authorized one in two thousand twenty-one. That's for building work for future capital projects. And we also have a Capital Reserve for bus purchases as well.
All right. Gotcha. I think that's all I had. Everyone good? All right.
I conclude Superintendent reports.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right. So we're going to be moving on to our public comment period. The Board, at one of our workshops, we arranged a little bit of the agenda, so we've moved this up a little bit earlier in the meeting. So instructions to sign up to speak are in the agenda, and you can do so prior to a Board meeting. The Board... The board will not be responding to comments at this time, but rest assured that we are listening, and comments will be followed up by our admin team. Concerns should be, or comments, rather, should be three minutes or less, please, and follow our code of conduct and respect and demeanor. I think we have a couple of speakers tonight. Our first speaker is Ms. Murrah. Please come forward. State your name and address.
Good evening. Dana Mar, 1690 Cultural Road. I'd like to ask everyone to think about the last time you tried parking in a parking lot that was either snow-covered or where the lines were faded and you couldn't see them. Often cars are parked all over the place, and it can become quite challenging to park effectively under these conditions. The same goes for students when boundaries and expectations are not clear, not enforced, or are so gray that they can't tell what those expectations are. This is a very delicate and very necessary balance for students to have appropriate limits and accountability while also having the needed support and flexibility where it makes sense to the situation. Not having this balance can lead to a number of issues, most importantly, concerns of safety. I think to this as the district with a number of issues of moving forward with a restorative practices approach. Even a child who's struggling and has a need for understanding and support also has just as great a need for boundaries, limits, and accountability to help them navigate towards a successful outcome. Without this, many do not have the motivation needed to make a positive change. I think to safe spaces in school, knowing there are safe spaces designated for specific groups of students, my concern is that the entire school should be a safe space for every student. No student should ever be in a position to feel the need to find a safe space due to bullying or any other sort of unkind interaction on the part of others. It is so vital that a culture continue to be developed where every student feels safe everywhere in the school, and a level of accountability in establishing appropriate boundaries for students is necessary in that process. When thinking about safety, bathrooms are a space where students should especially feel safe in, as this is a space that increases vulnerability for students in multiple ways. Having communal multi-stall gender-neutral bathrooms, such as what exists in Penfield High School, can have impact on students' sense of privacy and safety. It is recognized that all the bathrooms have concerns in terms of students doing things that bathrooms aren't intended to be used for. And with that, I emphasize the importance of accountability, specific to the situations where concerns exist, regardless of the specific bathroom type. Has students and families as a whole had the opportunity to weigh in and provide input on their preferences, specific to bathroom spaces, and how those spaces are designated while remaining within the parameters of the established laws and regulations? If this has not occurred, I would advocate that students and families be provided a platform to share feedback on this important and sensitive issue. The new education law, Section 409-M, requires that all single occupancy bathroom facilities are designated as gender-neutral for use by no more than one occupant at a time, or for family or assisted use. While I recognize that the law does not specify details around communal bathrooms, one would have to presume that this law was written with the specification for boundary to be clarified, where there seems to be an important purpose behind it. Going back to my question about the parking lot, when we look at the school environment and all the things I've spoken about tonight, what does that parking lot look like for students as well as faculty? If the situation is looking challenging, then I encourage that we, and request that the district look closely at further developing the delicate balance of boundaries and accountability with support and understanding for its students and faculty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second speaker this evening is Mr. Leonardo.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Carmen Leonardo and I reside at 1915 Penfield Road. I'm here tonight on behalf of Penfield United for Education Excellence. We would like the district to adopt a policy of informed parental consent and eliminate the practice of providing an opt-out. This past spring, Bay Trail conducted a student survey that, while described as anonymous, was not. The survey was conducted on district-issued laptops on the district's network, and responses could easily be indexed to a specific machine and therefore the student. The survey asked questions about student demographics, including grade, pronouns, and a question asking students to share more about their identity, potentially including gender identity, race, ethnicity, ability, disability, and age. Clearly, a student diligently answering these questions could unwittingly divulge their identity. The email to parents provided a link to an opt-out form. But most parents I know are extremely busy and receive an enormous number of emails each day. We question whether these emails provide sufficient notice and wonder how many parents might opt-out if they had both a detailed description of what was being considered and sufficient time to digest the information. With the current practice, if the opt-out form is not completed, the survey or whatever else is in question will be administered. Providing for informed consent, however, would eliminate the possibility of students being subjected to what their parents object to. Asking parents to respond by indicating that they have read the information and give their consent assures that only those whose parents agree with the program will be allowed to participate. We believe there are federal statutes and state statutes that are applicable when collecting data about students that require informed parental consent. Applicability, though, is obscured, as in one example, the source of the funds used to pay for the vehicle by which the data is collected. But even if these laws do not apply, in the interest of transparency, informed consent should be the standard and not the current opt-out. And as I conclude, I want to thank the board and the administration for altering your agenda and putting the public comment period towards the beginning of your agenda and not the end, and calling it something other than visitor speaking time. Thank you.
All right, so we're going to move on to organizational items. This is a good time to sneak out a few of them, just saying. I mean, not us, but all you guys.
I got excited there for a minute.
Not you.
Angela, you are, you could stay the whole time.
I mean, you're all welcome to stay the whole time, but that was one of the reasons why we moved this, because sometimes, you know, no one wants to sit around to listen to our business-y stuff. But you're all welcome to stay. We love people. All right, we're moving on to... She's like, I'm going to sneak out. Thanks, Angela. Number six. Moving on to number six. Is that something I have to read? No, that goes to eight. Okay. Board members may have a motion in a second that the revised curriculum rating projects be approved for the 2022-23 school year. Is that good? Do I have to read more of that? That's fine? Okay.
I would have read it. I would have read it.
So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor? All right, motion carries. We're on to 6B. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education authorizes Katherine Dean as designated and approval impartial hearing officer during the 2022-23 school year? Such hearing officers shall be presented for approval at the next regular meeting of the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Motion carries.
They're big shoes.
I know, I know. There's no one like Barb.
No, I think it's great. It's good.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're moving on to 8A. Oh, then I get my paper. We have a recommendation action that the board approves a lunch fund budget for the 2022-23 school year. The recommended food service budget is $1,980,000 for the 2022-23 school year. May I please have a motion in a second that the food service budget be approved as recommended?
So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Thank you. 8B, we have a recommended action that the board approves the prices of school meals for the 2022-23 school year. The federal USDA waiver for no-charge school breakfast and lunch is set to expire. The following meal prices have been calculated in accordance with the paid lunch equity provisions that school food authorities must adhere to. Accordingly, the following meal prices for students for the 2022-23 school year are recommended. $1.70 for breakfast and $3.00 for lunch. May I please have a motion in a second that approval be given for prices of school meals as recommended for the 2022-23 school year?
So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions? Actually, I have a question, Dan. Is there any movement? I meant to ask that earlier on in the federal about free? No.
About what?
The free, I just about doing...
Oh, okay.
Not expiring, or extending, I guess is the word I'm looking for.
There has been ongoing advocacy to continue that USDA waiver. If you recall, last year, it was literally like a Labor Day. It was a very last-minute thing. It seems like the rhetoric has been that we're moving on from the waivers, but that doesn't mean there hasn't been advocacy to continue it. At this point, I'm not optimistic that the free meals would continue, but I guess it's not impossible either.
Got it. All right, thank you. So we're voting. All those in favor? Sorry, I wail at us a little bit. All right, motion carries. Thank you. So we're on to 8C, tax rates and fund balance review. We have a recommended action to adopt the 2022-23 school tax rates and approve year-end transfers. The 2022-23 budget adopted by the Board of Education and approved by the Penfield Central School District Community indicated that $241,807 of projected fund balance would be used to reduce taxes and included a tax levy of $68,317,99. Did I do that right? The district anticipates receiving $9,681 in re-levis of prior year's disallowed exemptions. Pursuant to guidance from the New York State Comptroller and from the Monroe County Treasury, this amount should be reduced from the necessary levy. The tax rates have been calculated based on $68,301,397 levy, with the planned $241,807 assigned to reduce taxes. The 2022-23 tax rates are listed in your packet and were discussed this evening by Dr. Dan Driffl. May I please have a motion in a second that the above-described transfers and adjustments be approved and that the school tax rates for the 2022-23 school year be set based upon a real property tax levy of $68,301,397?
So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Oh, my goodness. I need to remember to bring water. We are on 8D. We have a recommended action that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to enter into a contract with the Villa of Hope. The district is contracting with Villa of Hope to provide therapeutic mental health and substance disorder services for students and families at Bay Trail Middle School and Penfield High School during the 2022-23 school year. Student support will be based on requests from the Penfield Central School District on behalf of students and families. The contract is not to exceed $25,000 and will be paid through Penfield Central School District general funding. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent of schools to enter into a contract with the Villa of Hope?
So moved.
Second.
And this we did last year, correct? And because we didn't talk about this earlier, I just want to make sure that everyone's clear, because this is, I don't know if we've talked about this for new board members.
So this is a contract with Villa of Hope. We did last year as well. It allows for student support from Villa of Hope counselors at our school, correct? Is this what I'm talking about?
Yes, Bay Trail and...
Bay Trail and High School. But this is where families and students have to sign off on that. So it's for really help. We started this a few years ago with a different organization, sort of fell apart, Villa of Hope stepped in. They do this in a number of districts in the area. But for families that cannot find or cannot transport to an outside counselor for mental health support, we can do that here in Bay Trail or Penfield High School. But it, to be clear, is really around families and students have to sign off on it. It's an outside provider. Insurance is involved, but it's an opportunity to help families and students who can't access outside mental health services due to transportation and requirements.
Well, that's the, I think that was the word, is access. I mean, it's really about access. Right? Because I mean, especially with the mental health shortage, it's very difficult to find a private therapist if, you know, if you need to find one.
Yeah.
So this is really great.
Villa of Hope counselors have, you know, they also have a caseload, so it can't be every single kid. But for those families where it can work, because it can happen perhaps after school and take the late bus as opposed, or during school, during a free period or a lunch period, it can help immensely if you've ever had to get a child into some sort of outside counseling. Trying to get them in is difficult. There's not enough providers, and there's a lot of kids in our area that need support, so.
Requests are made on behalf of the family.
Yep.
So the family would be facilitating the requests for service and support and collaboration.
Yeah, great.
That's the piece, I think, is really just one hit home and two, with our community watching, is that this isn't an outside counselor that, you know, you have to sign off. All those things happen from the parent's request. There was a good team there.
We did, we just have to vote. All those in favor?
Do they need a mo?
No, we did that. I was trying to do that and then ask the question. I know. But then I get, then I get confused. Okay. So now we're on to 8E. We have a recommended action that the Board authorizes superintendent of schools to enter into a contract with the Center for Youth Services for the 2022-23 school year. The district is contracting with the Center for Youth Services to prioritize social-emotional learning. This partnership and consultation will create a deeper awareness, which will enhance the work that Penfield Central School District is doing to add essential elements to its school programs to improve the academic and social-emotional performance of students. The Center for Youth Services shall provide full-time social learning specialists as part of the crisis intervention prevention help zone at the following schools: Penfield High School, Bay Trail Middle School, Cobble's Elementary, Harris Hill Elementary, Indian Lanning Elementary, and Scribner Elementary. These services will include a research-based curriculum and ongoing training and staff development to assist the faculty and staff in the district in adapting to these programs, including classroom management and crisis intervention in support of the comprehensive school-wide and district initiatives. The contract is not to exceed $300,000, and we be paid through CRSA legislation, which stands for, that's the part of the CARES Act? Or no?
Yeah, that was the second stimulus package, the Corona virus relief and response supplemental appropriations.
Thank you. Awesome. Can I have a motion in a second, please? That the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to enter into a contract with the Center for Youth Services for the 2022-23 school year?
So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? There's one more that I have to read. So this is the fuel agreement with Penfield Ambulance. We have recommended action that the superintendent of schools is hereby authorized to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with Penfield Ambulance for the provision of vehicular refueling for the period of August 17th, 2022 to June 30th, 2023, whereas the Penfield Ambulance has indicated a desire to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with the Penfield Central School District, and whereas the Board of Education finds that there is mutual benefit to such an arrangement. Therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent of schools is hereby authorized to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with Penfield Ambulance for the provision of refueling for the period I just mentioned. May I please have a motion in second to authorize this agreement for the 2022-23 school year?
So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions on that? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? All right, so now we're on to item nine. This is the approval of the Professional Learning Plan that we, I think we talked about at our last meeting, that, right? Dr. Maloney presented on this. May I have a motion, please, in a second? May I have a motion, please, in a second that the board approve the 2022-23 professional learning plan as was presented on July 12?
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments on that? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Thank you. May I have a motion, please, in a second that a board approved the recommended textbooks that were presented in July? I'm assuming we didn't have any public comments on.
We did not get any comment on either textbook.
Okay. Board members, motion in second?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Thank you. So we have a couple policies. Did you want to talk about policies, Tom?
I'm going to defer to Dr. Driffl. The one policy for first read is meal charging and prohibition against meal shaming, which is a law and required, but Dan, could you just talk a little bit about the, the minor change in this policy?
Is this the second read or first read?
This is the first read. The second read will be the day before school starts.
That's right. So the only change that we recommended with the paid meal starting again is that the current policy says every four days, if there's a negative account on the balance, we'll email the family. Now we're just changing it to every five days so that it's in a weekly cadence, but that was really the only change. And then we also updated the payment processor to, to be the new, the new payment processor, just that very much.
And you had a, did you have a question? You had a question on something? Did you not? Yes, I forgot what it was now.
I just asked if we inform parents of graduating seniors if there was money still remaining on their account.
Oh, right.
Because we, we, I think they have a year to claim it, is how I understand it.
Oh, and do you want to answer that, Dr. Driffl?
Do you want to?
I'll do it. So our policy right now is a great question. Our policy right now is that parents have to, of graduating seniors, have to request the funds back if they have a balance on their child's lunch fund and they graduate. Otherwise, it goes to, does it automatically go to the sibling?
That still needs to be requested as well.
So that would need to be requested to go to a younger sibling. And, and I think it's a great question that we can, the board can decide to, to look at, at policy committee to shift the policy, because it's policy language right now. It's a question I had never gotten before, and I don't have a kid who's graduated yet. I think most probably look at it and realize that they're leaving, but any of those balances, we want to make sure that we can definitely look at changing policy to inform parents after, after a child graduates.
Okay, so that's.
That's just a first read, so no action.
That's a first read, so we don't have to do anything for that, right? And then we have two, three, three policies for second read. If we, we haven't had any comments on those.
We haven't had any comments of these, and we reviewed them at length in the July 12 meeting.
Right. Okay, so our action board members, if I could have a motion, please, in a second that we approve policy 5220, 7130, and 7641.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Thank you. So that brings us to item 12, president's remarks. We talked a bit at length, I think, in our workshop about the upcoming NISBA conference, and I think Tom sent out the educational sessions. So we have time to look at that and see who might be interested in going. It's in Syracuse this year, and I think we have until September the 12th, right, to, for early bird registration.
11.
Or, I'm sorry, September the 11th. So we have some time to think about who might be interested in going, and then we can coordinate educational sessions, so, you know, we can try not to be, hopefully, repeating ourselves. You should have received, the, the other thing I want to talk about is Monroe County School Board Association is coming out with a new website, so I haven't had time to poke around in there, but it's supposed to be more efficient, and we're not supposed to be getting as many emails, have the ability to log in, and I think access information. So they've done a lot of work on that. I did get an email from Amy, she wanted to make sure that I brought that to everyone's attention. I did, I got login information. Did you guys get some login information?
I did.
So I haven't, I haven't done that part yet.
I haven't been able to either, but I was glad to see that, too.
Yeah, so I think, I think that'll be super cool.
Yeah.
So for unfinished business, we listed our committee assignments for the upcoming year. I think they're correct, but please, if they're not, let myself or Sharon know. We still need to figure out our legislative representative for NISBA, there's that virtual meeting, and then the Sustainability Club, because we don't know when that's going to meet, right, until students.
Yep.
Until school year. So I think this is a, a good start. There may be some changes here, you know, based on how we get moving in the school year, but please review in case I put you somewhere I didn't mean to. Any new business this evening?
No? Other than, is there like a law or a policy we can create to prevent Sharon from retiring?
Oh! Could we have a board action to prevent Sharon from retiring?
I don't think we can do that.
Okay, then.
We could ask Dan. Dan could make up something for us.
We might, you know, though, she, you know, she's willing to, you know, come in if, if we need some help and support in transition, so we always, we don't say goodbye, we just, we just say.
We just say until the next time.
See you soon.
See you soon. See you next time.
Like tomorrow morning.
So we're all going to come in tomorrow morning, and I'm going to need a new password, and she's going to be like, oh, please, please, no. All right, so no further business. May I have a motion, please, in a second that the meeting be adjourned at 8:13 PM?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? All in favor, meeting adjourned. Thank you.